Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Alejandra Barraza and I am happy to say that I'm celebrating my first year anniversary today as a president of the High Scope Educational Research Foundation. Welcome to our second round table of the book Segregation by Experience: Agency, Racism, and Learning in the Early Grades. You can actually purchase the book in our store at highscope.org. At this time, it is an honor to be able to introduce the moderator. Jennifer Kizadair is Associate Professor of Curriculum and Instruction at the University of Texas at Austin and Director of Agency and Young Children Research Collective, also a mentor to me and a good friend. So, welcome Jen.
Thank you. I am honored to be here. And I'm glad that after last month, I was invited back because you never know based on if I said something crazy or not, but I'm really glad to be here. I'm very proud to be one of the authors of this book along with Dr. Kyomi Sanchez Suzuki-Kohlgrove. And today, we're going to talk about chapter two. And I'm not going to do most of the talking, but I have invited my favorite three teachers in the world to be here today. These are the three teachers from whom I learned about agency and I was able to see how agency worked with young children of color. And all three of these teachers are tremendous human beings, but they are very skilled at offering young children agency in their learning. And they've all done it in diverse classrooms across ability groups, across racial groups, across cultural linguistic communities. And so they seem like the best people to talk about agency. And again, just as a reminder about why we wrote Segregation by Experience was really because we saw as we went into some mostly white and wealthy classrooms, you would see young children using a lot of agency. They could influence what they learned about, they could make decisions, they could have many opportunities to talk with their friends without needing permission every time. They could move around, they could come up with topics that they were interested in studying. And we went into a lot of classrooms, at this point, at least 100, where we saw children of color who were walking in prison-like lines, who had to sit on their hands, put bubbles in their mouth, couldn't talk to their friends, couldn't move around. And it was just a very, the amount of agency just is not equal across multiple learning contexts. And so we started to try to document this and to try and understand why it's happening. And so chapter two is really trying to show with as much detail and story kind of in the vein of Vivian Paley, lots and lots of stories to help illustrate what agency looks like and what do children do with their agency? And what are all the amazing capabilities that they demonstrate when we let them use their agency? So it is my deep honor to introduce Natasha Jones, who is the, who is the real Ms. Bailey. And she has generously agreed to be here today. And we're going to show you a video actually from each teacher's classroom. And we're going to start with Ms. Bailey or Ms. Jones. And just to introduce her, she is a doctoral student in the Department of Curriculum and Instruction at the University of Texas at Austin now. And she has an emphasis on early childhood education, which is great for the field. She has over 10 years of teaching and learning experiences with early and elementary age students in the US. Her research focuses on pedagogies for young children that are culturally sustaining and community-oriented. And she supports children's agency and tries to provide sophisticated learning educational experiences for historically marginalized children of color. And so with that, let me welcome Natasha Jones. And she'll talk about her classroom, we'll show you a video from her classroom, and she'll talk to us a little bit about how she approaches agency in her work as a teacher.
Hi, thank you for this introduction. Thank you for having me. I'm excited to be here. I met Dr. Jennifer Kizadair and Dr. Kohlgrove, Kyomi and Jen, about 10 years ago when the approach my teammate and I, we were first in first grade about, she was being in the classroom with the students and documenting like how agency impacts young children's learning. At the time, I was a little bit hesitant because I was pretty new at teaching young children. I had only taught first grade for one year. So that would be something that would like made me feel vulnerable a bit to have cameras and you know, people, the researchers in the classroom. But she reassured me that the focus will be on the children. So I agreed to it and I'm so happy that I did. So today, I wanted to show you just a short clip that was filmed 10 years ago with these first graders that are now 11th graders. It's been a while. Just and then have a little bit of conversation about what it was like for me as a teacher to kind of like switch practices to really support young children's agency and their ability to follow their curiosity and built on that with projects. So the video I'm going to show you, the focused child is brilliant Mary. Her student name is Mary. She, it was in October, I believe, we had had our first parent-teacher conferences before the long weekend. And we had had a long conversation with her and her family and talked about all sorts of things. And I told them that one of the things that I noticed is that Mary had been really interested in volcanoes. She actually came upon the topic of volcanoes by accident when she saw a piece of paper that was being printed from the other classroom. And she was like, what is this? You know, why are they standing about volcano? I'm also interested in volcano. And then it became this thing where, you know, at recess, they were like making volcanoes and they wanted to check out books about volcanoes and so on and so forth. And so after sharing that anecdote with her parents, her mom was like, oh, okay, I didn't know that. And Tuesday, after the long weekend, here walks in Mary with this beautiful model of a volcano that she had built with her family. And then she comes in, of course, as you can imagine, the first graders are like, what is this? You know, what, what were you going to do? Tell us about it. And of course, you know, I'm a first grade teacher. I had lesson plans and things planned for the day. But seeing all that excitement bubbling, we had to see what she had made and what would come out of it. So what you're going to see now is a clip of that moment when we decided to kind of pause on what we had planned for that morning and let Mary tell us about what she had built. And as you watch this clip, if you can, you know, take little notes of what you see, what you notice the children doing. And then we can talk about it together in a few minutes.
Put water inside and you put red, blue color. No, it's red. Red, blue color. And you put baking soda and then you put this and it's gonna explode. Can I see it happen? Are you gonna do it like right now? Make it explode.
Do it right now.
But I need water.
How much, how much water?
I think we need like this much water.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
That would be like, good.
It has a lot of water.
But I need more.
It's enzo.
Ow, ow, ow! Oh, no!
Oh, you weren't supposed to pour all of it.
Now baking soda.
Now baking soda. Baking, baking soda.
It's yogurt.
It's yogurt.
Oh, sorry.
It's a cute little bag.
Okay, by the way, I love all the introductions in the chat. So happy to see where all your, you're from and we are not to be able to see you. But so if you would share in the chat, what are some of the things that you're noticing? Or either that you like, that you know, you find interesting, unusual about this scene? Her confidence, yes. The support, cooperative skills, absolutely. Children had a chance to be leaders. Enthusiasm, yes. Excitement. Excitement is so important when we're learning. Interest engagement. Mary was so certain. More excitement and happiness. Kids leading and teachers off-screen, yes. Having fun is contagious. It absolutely is. Child directive, active vocabulary. Child-led with open-ended questions. Lots of conversation. Joy, child-initiated. Oh, yes. Wonderful. All of these things. And this clip is one of my favorite, other than the fact that my filming job is really terrible on this. Because when this happened, Kyomi and Jen unfortunately were not there. So I used this little quick camera and did the best that I could in filming this. Yes, everyone was included. And what I love about this clip is that you, just like it's really centered around the children. Mary is making, is calling the shots, she's explaining what she did. Normalizing the mess. Yes, that's actually one of the things that she still remembers till this day is the gigantic mess that was created, but it was so much fun and it was so much excitement. And one thing that I didn't mention before the video is that Mary, on paper, for, I see a lot of you teach in the US context. And we, here, you know, in a lot of schools, we have a lot of assessments that, you know, we do with children at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year. And according to her beginning of the year scores, Mary was what we would call an at-risk child because she didn't do so well on the pre-reading skills, on her math scores, the different measurements would show that she was having trouble in school. And without, without seeing that context, it's, you know, you see her in this particular video. She's, she's a leader, she took initiative, she brought this model, she's answering questions, she's defending her, her position. One student say, oh, this thing, no, it's red. And then explaining like what is happening. And she's really, before that, in the classroom, had been a child that was really quiet. She was like, she always had like this little bright light in her eyes when she was interested in things, but she didn't share much. She was bilingual child who was learning to speak English and was very fluent in Spanish. So this film was beautiful in the sense that she, at that moment, became the teacher and taught all of her friends about what she had learned. And this was just like a common experience that just ignited like more interest in volcanoes. Children were checking out books from the library about volcanoes. They all wanted to learn together and work together. And as I said first, when Jen and Kyomi approached me, I was a little bit skeptical because I was, I didn't really know what that would look like to be able to support children's agency in the classroom. You know, I, I learned that, you know, as a, as a good teacher, you have to have, you know, some good control. You have a set of essential knowledge and skills that your students have to learn throughout the semester, the year, you have to have a plan. And each subject area has specific things that you should be doing. And in some schools where I've worked, it was even like every 15 minutes, you, everything was predetermined on what you had to do. So like, when I heard agency, I had a little bit of moment of panic thinking, well, what does that look like? It turned out that, to begin with, there were quite a few things that we were doing that did support children's agency, but we definitely had room for growth. And with the example of Mary, I learned over time that really, of course, as a teacher who worked in a public school, I had to pay attention to the things that, you know, I have to, like the, they have to take these benchmarks, they have to do these things. But that's just a tiny sliver of what children are capable of, what they know and what they could contribute to the learning. A lot of you in the chat talked about the joy and the excitement and this is palpable. I mean, it is so much more fun to teach or learn about things that people are excited about and want to know more about. Their, their sustained attention is just like completely different. And we could spend weeks, months exploring, going into depth into topic because children, A, got to make choices about what they learned, who they learned with, how they were going to explore the topic, they could learn from one another. And it wasn't restrained to one part of the day. What we did oftentimes is that my teammate and I, as long as, as along with the research team, we also liked how to learn to exercise our own agency when we're planning for activities. We had our lesson plans, but also we spent a lot of more time listening in on children. What are they curious about? What are they wanting to know? What are they talking about at recess? What are they talking about when we're traveling from the cafeteria to the classroom? What are these conversations and questions? What are they noticing? What are they curious about? And just kind of like listening in to know how to guide some of the things that we would follow and how they would fit into the curriculum. We got to get really, really familiar with the, all of, in Texas, we call them "antiques", the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills. So all of the different things they're supposed to know and just kind of fit it like a puzzle. So that was very, a very exciting thing to do in this process. For the specific example of the volcano, we learned about chemical reaction, it's changes in states of matter. We learned about landforms that were all part of what we, you know, the children had to know, but they got excited about it. They wanted to read about it. They wanted to ask each other's questions about it. And being able to just kind of step back and just support them as they continue to ask question and deepen their learning was just a beautiful, beautiful thing to do.
So can I ask you a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
Okay. So one question is something that comes up often, as you know, when, when people talk about agency is this balance of, of agency or this, the ability to influence and make decisions about how you're learning something or what you're learning, so that you actually expand your capabilities past just like following directions, but you expand like a huge range of capabilities. I'm wondering like what kinds of capabilities you saw them develop? And how do you see the connection between children using their agency and the capabilities that you saw? Like, for example, like when you opened up your classroom and you supported more of their agency, they, they got to make more of the decisions and they influenced more of like what you were studying or how you were studying it? What kinds of capabilities did you see that were different than before you did that?
So the first part to answering that question would be who, like, was able to show what they know? And like, because, you know, in any given class, you have the students that, you know, often readily like provide information, they have knowledge about topics and they just like are able to, like what we call participate a lot more like verbally with their own knowledge. But I feel like opening up the classroom really allowed for a much wider variety of students to feel comfortable to share their questions, their knowledges, because we weren't so restrained to like, we're talking about this topic at this time and you're going to answer it within this framework. Like it opened up the possibilities of how you could show what you know or even like what you're interested in is, you know, it's, it's open-ended. And also the possibilities for sharing out questions or knowledges were not just like whole group, the child to the teacher, the teacher to the child. They could be in small group, it could be working in pairs, it could be working with a a group of three or four students or posing a question to the whole class. So I feel like there was a lot more communication. And that means that, you know, us adults had to learn to just sometimes just, you know, don't see it as misbehavior or interruption, but as children contributing their thoughts, their questions. So what we do sometimes in the classroom is we, we say, especially when we're working with immigrant children, children that are like developing language skills, it's like, oh, they need to expand their vocabulary, they need to expand their vocabulary, but then we don't give them the opportunity to talk and listen and just, you know, because participating doesn't always have to be verbal or you can just be there and listen and be attentive. So with agency, that these capabilities to be able to express, like even like refine a question, like even figuring out, like, let's say we're going to work on a project. At first, some of the students were like, well, I don't know. I mean, because we're so used to being told, this is what we're doing, this is how we're going to do it, and this is how you're going to respond to that. But with the project, the, the entry points were multiple. So at first, some students were just listening and like just kind of paying attention to what this group was doing and this group is doing. Maybe slowly easing in, asking questions or starting their own, their own project or asking their own questions. So being capable of seeking answers either by reading or asking others, watching others, communicating with one another, making mistakes, getting frustrated and trying again. And just knowing also that there's different ways you can answer things, sharing out. Because at, by the end of the semester, the first semester, everybody wanted to present what they had learned and wanted to, like they volunteered to get up in front of the classroom and show the class the excitement, like the excitement to say, you know, I just spent all of this time working on this and I want to show you. Getting excited about producing something, learning something and then sharing it out was one of the most beautiful thing, you know. I didn't know how to do that when I was six years old or seven years old, for sure.
Yeah, that was, I, it was amazing to watch them change. Like to wa, there were some that were going to be like comfortable in front of the whole group, no matter what. They just kind of came in that way. But I'd say the majority, they just, it became such a normal thing to talk in front of everyone and to share what you learned and to be excited about it, that there was, there was no like perfect way you had to do it. Everyone was just sharing stuff all the time. So it ma, it made it comfortable for everyone to do that. Even ones we might consider really shy or really hesitant academically, it just became way less of an issue. So I love that you said that. The other thing I was going to ask before we move on to John and we're, please feel free to put your questions that you have for any of the panelists in the Q and A box. And we're, we're saving 10 or 15 minutes at the end so that we can get to your, your questions that you might have. But the other question is, sometimes there's a fear, and you talked a little bit about this when you first heard, when Kyomi and I first approached you about this research project, you had no idea would stick around for like 10 years. But you, you, you talked about just being hesitant about, about the concept or the word "agency", because I think sometimes people think it means do, let kids do whatever they want. And I'm wondering, in the context of working with, with Black communities and Latinx immigrant communities, like you did in, in the school that we just saw, how you were able to balance agency and really support children's agency while still preparing them and, and helping them learn the values that are important to their own communities without not making it a free-for-all, because that's, might, might not be safe for them, unfortunately. But I'm just wondering how you balanced it and how you kind of thought about wanting to support agency, but also wanting to be true and, and honor the communities that they come from and the realities that they live?
I think that's one of the beautiful thing about having classrooms that support children's agency is that your classroom community ends up being a true reflection of the people that are there, which varies from year to year. And you create something that's very particular to this space this year, this group of children. And by having the opportunity to, to talk and sometimes argue and sometimes negotiate materials and negotiate access to things or having misunderstanding, because you know, when you have plenty of opportunities to talk to one another, that also means there's opportunities for disagreements and things like that. But I mean, there, there are some conflicts that children learn to solve, but it, we also need to teach children, I mean, not teach, to teach ourselves that if we don't give people opportunity to practice a skill, they're not going to learn it. So having a safe space where you can express. One of the clip that I thought instead of the volcano was the scene where you have these two little boys that are really mad at each other, they're not talking to one another. And I'm in the middle of a teaching math concept. And so I tell them to go solve their problems and then the camera follows them, which I would have never seen if Jen and Kyomi weren't in my classroom. And they like, it's like, oh, I thought you tripped me, but no, you didn't trip me. You know, it was an accident. And then you see them like walking off, like, you know, holding each other. And they had time and space and they were trusted to talk to each other and solve a problem. But also, having agency doesn't mean that we don't have any rules and that we don't have expectations. There are a lot, a lot of conversations that we had in the classroom about treating each other the way we want to be treated, like respecting our environment, not just the people, the physical environment, you know, one another, a lot of like open conversation, but that we're not necessarily like me telling them, this is how you need to be, but also having space for children to express, you know. You know, after recess, you know, this happened and then talking about it in a circle so that you were experiencing like these feelings and nobody's asking for everyone to be perfect all the time, that's an impossible ideal. But having time and space to talk about these things and how that impacts the community when we choose to do things that, that only serves our, like our own need and the purpose of what you're trying to achieve. But what ends, ended up happening in year after year after that is even if at the beginning of the year, you know, we were getting to know each other and it's like just kind of bumpy, eventually, you know, we learn to care about our community. And again, the community is like broadly defined as, you know, the people, the things, the environment, the families, the, the, the community members. And just really prioritizing, you know, when, when, we are not, the goal is not just, I am autonomous, I do whatever I want, whenever I want. It's pursuing what you want to do while still being caring and taking care of one another, which there were plenty of opportunities to do in an agentic space, to care for one another. Not just the teacher caring for the children, but the children to, to care for each other and help each other.
That was a big, that was a really big thing that I learned in your classroom and that I hope we write enough about in the book. But it was like agency, because you were letting children influence a lot of the things that happen, not just academically, but also like in their engagements with each other and how they, who they worked with, who, like, they got to talk in the hallways as they walked from place to place. Excuse me. And so when there was disrespect or when there was something that should not have happened, the reason to fix it wasn't because I said so and it wasn't even because that's what we do in this classroom. It was we care about each other and we hurt each other's feelings. Or we, it was really rooted in, we're a community, we know each other. We have a lot of time to get to know each other and therefore we care about each other. And I just found that really interesting that it wasn't like you taught them that. It just was able to come out because they had so much time to get to know each other. So I hope that, I mean, as you know Natasha, I could listen to you talk all day long or for weeks at a time. So please, if you have questions, is there anything that you wanted to say that you didn't get to say before I, before I go to John?
I look forward to hearing from John and Monica.
Okay, great. Thank you so much Natasha for being here and also for just being the most incredible research partner ever and for being, teaching me pretty much everything that I know about agency came from being with you in your class and watching how you are as a teacher. So I will always admire you and I'm just really grateful that we get to keep working together.
Thank you. I'm grateful.
Okay, so I'm going to introduce John Wright. And he's going to set up the video from his classroom that we all get to watch. And Dr. John Wright was an elementary teacher and administrator for 13 years. Um Dr. John Wright was an elementary teacher and administrator for thirteen years. And I had the amazing privilege to be in his classroom and to watch him teach as well. And he completed his PhD in special education with a focus on severe disabilities and early childhood special education at Vanderbilt. He holds credentials as a BCBA and researches inclusive instructional practices for students with autism and developmental delays. And he was an assistant professor of special education at Marsh College for two years and now is an assistant professor at of teacher education um with a focus on on early childhood special education at Western Kentucky. And um, all right, so John, it's all yours.
Thank you. So thank you for letting me be here. I it's such an honor to share this space with such both amazing projects and educators, but also just to talk about something that's really important. Um the clip that you're gonna see, and I'm I'm geeking out a lot, so I'm trying not to want to talk so much about chapter two and Natasha's brilliance. And so I'm gonna set the stage for this clip and we'll talk a little bit about agency. Um I was a first grade teacher. This was, I'm trying to figure out, um probably uh twenty thirteen, we had just learned about the verdict whether George Zimmerman was going to be prosecuted for the killing of Trayvon Martin, um which seems like a really heavy topic to talk about with first graders. But we were in the middle of a project-based learning um lesson where um we were studying the Underground Railroad and abolitionists. And I should say, full disclosure, the project approach that I actually worked with Jen, and she sort of both was a cheerleader, but also sort of led me through Lillian Katz and all these brilliant educators. Um it kind of guided how I taught just in general. I really focused on science and social studies and embedded all the other things that I was like had to teach. Um so this is midway through that project, um and Jen will show the video and we'll talk about it.
Just a heads up that some of the voices are a little bit low, so you might want to turn up your um volume just to make sure that you can hear well.
On the radio there was?
No, I heard the same story you told us once. It was on the radio in my dad's car.
Oh, you heard that story?
Yeah, yeah, and then that person was carrying Skittles and tea. And then that other person um thought that um the um Skittles and tea was dangerous.
Do you remember that story? Do you remember? Do you remember why that story was really sad?
Because they killed him for no reason.
For no reason?
Which
Wow.
On the radio and I told my dad.
Oh, you heard the story today?
Um but um he was only
Oh, so William didn't hear the story. Remember when we were talking about um
Black skin history?
Well, we were talking about lots of things, but one of the things we talked about was sometimes, sometimes when someone sees another person, they have an idea what that person's about before they get to know them. And we talked about someone named Trayvon Martin, who was just like a regular teenage boy walking through his own neighborhood. And someone thought, because he happened to be black, that he was dangerous. And they followed him and he ended up getting hurt, hurt so bad that he died. This person No one else understood why either.
Even if he has black skin, it doesn't make him dangerous.
Just because the color of your skin does not make you dangerous, and we know that. But there was a grown up who followed up who didn't know that. But it's interesting that Hold on. Yeah, go ahead.
So the grown up got arrested.
Well, the grown up did get arrested, but in this, this is something kind of weird to understand. The grown up that got arrested said that he thought that the boy was dangerous. And guess what happened?
They believed him.
They believed him.
And he's always holding snacks.
Strange, right? And he was holding snacks. But you bring that up, when after we talked about that, Isabel heard about Trayvon on the radio. And is that what you were talking to your dad about? It's interesting that you're talking about that, because today's story that we're gonna talk about, that we're gonna start, is also um about a boy who grows up. Um and I think the boy in this story is, in a lot of ways, kind of like Trayvon. Because he does not die, but I think being a boy, especially right now, being a boy who is African American, sometimes is really hard. And it's not just hard right now, it's been hard for a long time. And the story today, again, I'm using a story that's illustrated by my favorite illustrator, because the pictures, I think, are really important to see. Um it's written, uh it's called Henry's Freedom Box, and it's by Ellen Levine and illustrated by Kadir Nelson. And why I think that this makes a lot of sense with what you guys are talking about today is this story um is based in something that really happened. It's based on a true story that happened kind of a long time ago because people were treated badly. We're talking about slavery. We're still talking about abolitionists. We're talking about people trying to help them in the Underground Railroad and all these things that were really not so great about our history. And you think, oh, but there's no more slavery. Thank goodness. Then why are people still being hurt who happen to be black? So hold on, I want you to save that for a second and listen to my question. Hold on, I want you to listen to this question, then you can say something. Why are people still being hurt just because they're black? What were you thinking, William?
Well, it's because the people they don't know, and I'll tell you why. And well, it's some, in in our side of the world, no slavery, but there's another side of the world where there is slavery.
We talked about that too, right? We talked about slavery is not over everywhere.
So they're just taking some of our people over there.
Wow.
That's not good.
How does that make you feel?
Sad.
How does it make everyone else feel, to know that there are people that are slaves somewhere around the world?
That is totally crazy, because believe it or not.
So there's a lot to unpack with that video. So I should say, first of all, um so the idea is like what makes that an important interaction? That's my morning meeting, or was my morning meeting. Uh gone are the days that you sit and talk about calendar and the weather. I I feel like I've never been that teacher, but um we talk about what's important to us. So in this case, Isabel brought up that she heard the Trayvon Martin and the George Zimmerman um verdict. And it didn't derail us from, I wanted to kind of um talk about things that are important to me, like there are still rules, there are things that we need to discuss. But because this was um really salient, like it was tangible, like we could touch um what Isabel was bringing, and it was silent. There was not a lot, like people were hanging on the, you know, the edge of their seats to hear this story. And what it makes me think about something that Dr. Adair and I talked about, and she gave a presentation a while ago, but she said little kids aren't stupid. And I think that's the reason why I feel like I had been successful in early childhood is I've never treated my kids regardless of their age or if they had a disability, that they are stupid. So you see that morning meeting, um I think it exemplifies the kind of agency we have when it comes to what we talk about, because their ideas mattered. They mattered because I talked about them and I let them share the floor. Um and in this instance, by the way, William was not a member of our classroom, he was visiting. So he was like jumping in and like contributing and trying to catch up with the rest of us. Whereas um the other students in the classroom had already kind of, we've talked about Trayvon, we had already started an Underground Railroad project. Um what what I want you to kind of maybe think about and unpack is um when we talk about hard stuff, even in this case, we're talking about like murder, right? Um it doesn't seem like fodder for a first grade classroom, but it really was. I was allowed to have the space, um you know, under the the standards of like teach historically significant events, you know, such as Clara Barton. I'm like, I don't want to teach about Clara Barton. The American Red Cross is brilliant. We're not gonna talk about that. We're gonna use other things. So I'm still teaching what I need to, but I can bring in what was topical and of interest, and the kids were interested, and they brought this up multiple times. So that's when, like in the book, when Natasha like drops the lesson plan and we're gonna talk about volcanoes, we drop like, I'm not gonna get to read the book today, but at least we can talk about what's interesting to you and we'll get to this at some other time. That's what agency means to me, which boils down to believing kids have something important to say and questions to ask and figuring out how to let them um how to let them find answers. So that is uh I I'm immensely proud of of that project. I want to call out on my my little Silas at the end, who comes out as African American, because to know this child is to know that I feel like this conversation transformed him and a lot of the kids in this class. Um and allowed him to be the smart kid and the kid who had ideas and the kid to listen to. And um it did a lot, not only for him specifically, but he was really comfortable, right? Like, he's talking to his peers. This was a pretty diverse class, but he needed like to identify with Trayvon so that he then could be a knowledge halver, right? And he was, he was this knowledge halver, and he led a lot of the further discussion um on, you know, this this project we were doing. So um it's a very proud moment for me as a teacher, and it was uh it was good that Dr. Adair got to to film that.
Thank you so much, um Dr. Wright, for sharing that and for just being an amazing teacher. And as you know, it was of I was sad when I missed days of filming, when amazing conversation, particularly about racism and equity would come up and the kids brought them up. And over time, it's like all the kids brought it up. It wasn't even just kids of color in the class. There were plenty of white kids who were interested also in these conversations, kids across ability who were interested in these conversations um that you scaffolded to make sure that they could be present and have them. Nobody was counted out of those. So I loved being in your classroom, as you know, and um and we just need to pull out all the videos from your class and start using them. Um but thank you so much for being here. Okay, our third teacher, um Monica Alonso is a PhD student also and in curriculum instruction at UT Austin. And her emphasis is on early childhood education, special education, and bilingual education. And she's focused on inclusive early childhood classroom communities. Her work includes research with the Agency and Young Children Research Collective. Um she's currently an early childhood educational coach for High Scope San Antonio Hub of Excellence. And she is a former pre-K special education teacher with a an incredible inclusion experience. Um so I'll turn it over to Monica.
Thank you, Dr. Adair. Yes, I am a native San Antonioan. Um so my years spent in early childhood special education have been in San Antonio in a Head Start program and working alongside children with exceptionalities and also working with their amazing families, because we partnered together to provide just the the most amazing experiences for children. And I had learned as well so much from the children I worked alongside with and their families. And we have a video to share with you all. And in this video, the children had just woken up from rest time and they were in work time. And we still had one child, um who was Angel, who was asleep on the carpet. And the kids were trying not to wake him up. And in this video, you'll also hear and see how I didn't control the children's actions, but let them use their agency and how they interacted with Angel, who who was still sleeping, as you'll hear, even with the children, and how their voices get a little louder. And then eventually, the children do join in with Angel by using the space and also lay down and as Angel's still sleeping. So I'll go ahead and share this video with you.
And again, feel free to turn your volume up if you can't uh hear super well.
Kaden sees water falling down. Kaden's looking at the water, and it's called the gutter. It's called the gutter.
We can't go in the water. No!
All the water from the roof goes into the gutter. You can see the pipe, you can see the pipe from here. So it's coming through the gutter, and that pipe, and it just comes down. So it doesn't stay on there. Yeah, that's why you see it coming down. It looks like it's raining. Water coming down. Kaden thought it was still raining. Yeah, it's coming down from the roof. It gets raining right there.
Guys, look at here.
All right, come up out the window. Don't wake, Emery says not to wake him up.
Huh?
I think he was very tired today. Angel. You wanna lay down and read a book? Where are you going to go, Angel? Kaden, Michael's going to read a book. He's going to read a book about triangles. She's going to read a book about triangles. Ready? I'm ready, Michael. You're ready. Eric's ready. Mike, we're ready, Michael. You're gonna read it to us? I'm ready. I'm ready.
You ready?
I'm ready. So you you found a different kind of pillow? What is that? Almost, almost? Oh, that's not Best Rager?
All right. So in this video, as you all um see, Angel's still sleeping, even with the amount of like noise that um the children are are by expressing themselves and the movement in the classroom as well too. But we did have a child, Amory, who spoke up and said, Angel's still sleeping. And I could have easily gone in and said, like, you know what, Angel's still sleeping. We need to keep our voices down. But I'd left that time and space to see what children were doing, because it's so easy just to jump in. But it does take time and practice to see, like, I wanted to give children that that opportunity to see how they would be empathetic towards Angel, who just needed that extra time to sleep. And then children did give him that time and space. And then eventually, they did come and lay down and start reading some books and during that work time as well as Angel was sleeping. And this was just one of the moments, and this happened daily throughout uh in the classroom. It was a an inclusion classroom. I partnered with a special, or I was a special ed teacher. I partnered with a general ed teacher. And then we had three other adults in the classroom that helped support the children. And so we had, we would always just, if children needed more time to transition, if they were moving, um sometimes it took twenty minutes and we were on the floor, um rubbing their back or whatever we need, we needed to help that child meet their needs. And sometimes it took twenty minutes from us to walk from one space to another space. Um but it was just helping support children what they needed, or if it was us stepping back and then other children providing that those back rubs or providing some type of support for for another child. And then the children would do that as well too. It wasn't always us as the adults. So there was a lot of moments of agency in the classroom that it just was stepping back and providing the time and space to children have, for them to have these opportunities.
So in your i- in the inclusion classroom, you had multiple languages. You had a range of um special needs. You had um and just like, and you had, you had kids across, I think, four, three, four, and five. And so how, I think a lot of teachers would see all of that, that And so how, I think a lot of teachers would see all of that, that diversity, and say, wait, I need to have a little more control, like, they're going to need more structure. So what kind of helps you go the other way? Why, why is agency so important to you, even across a range of abilities? Why children with special needs? Why do you think that they need to be able to use their agency?
They had agency in how they communicated. Sometimes it was using their voice, using language, sometimes it was with gestures, sometimes it was them showing us what they wanted. But if we did not provide that, that agency, then we would never know what they were trying to communicate with us. And that was just one way of how they use their agency and how they communicate it with their bodies. Because for some of them, that was their way of expression, was through their body, and being able to tell us with their body what they were wanting, if it was, if their emotion, or if they wanted a certain toy, or if they wanted to get from one space to another. And if we didn't allow for those opportunities, then we were not acknowledging the child, we were not honoring their, their identity of how they communicate, or who they are, and their language, or even their exceptionality. And if we didn't allow it, it can go the other way, where they would just shut down, and then no one was learning, the child wasn't learning. And what it may look like was, maybe shoes would be start, they would communicate by throwing shoes across the classroom, or communicate with other forms of, with other actions. So when we allowed for that agency of how children were in the classroom, it just opened up the many capabilities they have, because then we caught to see their amazing capabilities as well too. If they were leading, read aloud, if they were going to assist a friend, because water just spilled across the floor, and it's everywhere, we saw those opportunities where they may not be able to say with words, like, I'm going to go grab a mop, but they go grab the mop and then start cleaning it. So there was agency opportunities throughout the entire school day.
Thank you, Monica. This is a question for all three of the panelists, but I'm wondering how, what you had to work on yourself as a teacher in order to support children's agency? What did you find? Like, I mean, there's a lot of comments, and Monica gets this every time she presents videos from her classrooms about how calm she, you are. You're very calm and very patient. And I'm wondering if, if you can talk a little bit about how your own reflection on your own practice and how you are as a teacher, if as you're trying to support children's agency, do you change as a teacher? And, and anyone can start or tackle that question?
I can, I can jump in. Yes, I think, I think I was probably a very conscientious teacher about the interests of my students, from, from being a novice baby teacher to where I was filmed there. But how I changed was, regardless of the background of the kiddo, race, gender, you know, if this is a kid dealing with trauma, whatever, I could see the moment when something resonated with them, because they had the power, right? They had this ability to direct their own learning, and they're not used to that. It's almost like they, they spent the first five or six years of their life just being told and talked at, and when they weren't needing to sit and get information, when they had some control, there's like a physical change that goes over them, and then there's a physical change that goes over you. You're like, oh, what I just did by allowing them to like, research, you know, first grade research looks very different than what we might think, but it changed the way I planned and assessed what kids know. It really allowed me to individualize an understanding of what formatively this child could do, and where I needed to push, that paper and pencil and kind of standard assessments could never do. So I think it changed me more than any way on how I perceive their abilities towards like, standards of, you know, like, standards that we think of, like, can they read and write, and things like that?
Thank you.
Or than anything else I did. I think this sort of ownership piece changed that for them and for me.
Okay, thank you. Natasha, do you want to add to that?
I was nodding to a lot of what John was sharing. There was so much unlearning that I had and continue to have to do, based on the experiences I received as a child, and also what, you know, teacher training, or like, or the schools where I was in, the things that were reinforced that I had to unlearn. But one of the things I want to share about is, it's really difficult to believe in agency and provide agency when teachers themselves don't have much agency. So, learning to be uncomfortable with things that you don't know, because when you open up the classroom, the kids are going to come up with all sorts of things that I have no idea about, but like, just being okay with that, and just showing them that, you know what, there's a lot of things to be learned, we're going through this process, you know, together, and also even in coming up with what to do that day. I remember sitting down, you know, with the research team and with my teaching partner, and just brainstorming, kind of going through the same process as the children were when they were working on a project, that, you know, noticing that, you know, this person knows a lot about this, and this person knows a lot, and I can contribute this, and just kind of like, this whole process, going through it yourself, before you see the children go through it. And just kind of like modeling and being able to empathize with, like, sometimes it's hard, and sometimes you just struggle, and you just have to find the right person, the right resource. Sometimes there's an answer in a book that you don't know how to read, but you have to find your friend who does know how to read, but you're also really good at cutting, so I can help them with that. So just like, kind of learning to know each other in different ways than, I'm just going to work with my friend, but like, we have common interests, and we can help each other. That's something that, you know, I learned to do myself, just be okay with being comfortable and with not knowing everything, because I certainly don't.
Yeah, thank you, Natasha. I think we're at the end, and I am so grateful to all three of you for, for being here. And again, I mean, this book wouldn't exist without the three of you. I think there's so much, I, as a researcher, and also just as someone who's really committed to supporting children's agency among communities of color, that I just really relied on what I could see happening in your classroom. It's really hard to change something that you can't see, and I was able to see it in your classrooms. And I think for me, as a researcher, it really changed my professional life, watching from your expertise and just watching how you are as teachers. And I know in further chapters, we'll talk more about the connection between agency and racial justice. We'll talk, next week, we're talking about how all the teachers responded to all the educators, teachers and principals and superintendents, and, and directors, how they all responded to videos of Ms. Bailey's classroom. There were a lot of surprising reactions, so excited to dig into that next week. But thank you to all three of you for being here and just being tremendous examples of teaching.
On behalf of Highscope, I want to thank all the panelists for coming out and sharing your story, and Jen also for moderating this incredible conversation. We want to remind you that segregation by experience, agency, racism, and learning in the early grades, you can find it in our store on highscope.org. And we're excited to continue the discussion of this important book. On October 20th at 2:00 PM, we will talk about the next chapter. And we also want to invite everyone to the National Black Child Development Institute is celebrating 50 years of service, and they will be holding their 2021 virtual conference on October 14th through the 15th, and the registration is now open. Highscope is a nonprofit organization. Donate to invest in elevating early childhood education outcomes. Your donation to Highscope ensures our research and development of innovating assessment, curriculum, and professional development tools and resources will empower the next generation of dedicated early childhood educators. We are very proud to continue supporting important topics that parallel to what we do at Highscope. We acknowledge the strength of children, we believe in active learning, we want children with a voice who are confident, we want teachers co-creating a learning environment with their children, and we remind everyone that when we talk about early childhood, it's birth through third grade. Thank you all very much for joining us today.